All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to officially call this October 24th Town Council meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, if you could do a roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Trolinger?
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Present.
Councilman Jenkins?
Present.
Mayor James, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. And I would ask that everyone stand and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Arguably, the hardest part of our meeting right now comes up. I'm looking for the approval of meeting agendas. Do I have a motion to accept it as is?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we accept the October 24th, 2023 meeting agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. This brings us to our next item agenda. It is approval of the minutes for our closed session on the 17th, as well as our Town Council meeting on the 17th. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept the regular council meeting minutes and the closed session meeting minutes on October 17th, 2023, as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Motion carries. This brings us to our public comment part of our meeting. If there's anyone who would like to speak this evening, I ask that you state your name, whether you live within the incorporated town limits. And if you could keep it to three minutes, it would be appreciated. Seeing none, we will go on to, we have four proclamations this evening. The first one will be about the First Responders Appreciation Day, and that will be Councilwoman Trolinger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas both career and volunteer individuals from police, fire, emergency, medical services, search and rescue, and other organizations in the public safety sector come together as first responders to aid the public in the event of an emergency. And whereas every day, first responders risk their own safety and personal property in the performance of their duties to protect our citizens. And whereas first responders are our first and best defense against all emergencies that may threaten our communities, whatever their nature. And whereas first responders are ready to aid the people 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas first responders are highly trained specialized workers who contribute their excellent skills for the public good. And whereas first responders are a vital part of every community who maintains safety and order in times of crisis and volunteer in our cities and schools. And whereas the families of first responders also make significant sacrifices to support their loved ones' service and live with the reality that their spouse, sibling, parent, or loved one may not return home from the job. And they deserve our appreciation and respect for bearing this burden. Now, therefore, we, the Council of the Town of La Plata, do hereby proclaim October 28th, 2023, as First Responders Appreciation Day in the Town of La Plata. The Council encourages all citizens to enjoy, to join us in expressing gratitude for the significant work and sacrifices of our first responders and their families. Now, this is signed by Madam Mayor Janine James, the Trolinger Councilman, Evelyn Bryant Ward, Councilwoman David Jenkins, Councilman.
Thank you very much. And we will make sure that we give a shout out to all those first responders on their special day, which is coming up this week. The next one that we have is proclamation for trick-or-treating. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. Here's a proclamation, trick-or, oh, the wrong one. Trick-or-treating in La Plata. Whereas Halloween is an annual tradition that encourages children and their families to partake in festive activities. Whereas one of the primary avenues of our participation is through the trick-or-treat tradition in our community. And whereas the young residents of La Plata have the privilege to experience the delight of Halloween trick-or-treating. And whereas this event provides a unique opportunity for our community to foster closer connections as our trick-or-treaters and their chaperones go about their treating rounds. Now, therefore, we, the Council of the Town of La Plata, hereby designate Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM as the official trick-or-treat evening in the Town of La Plata for those who prefer the traditional celebration. We kindly suggest that all trick-or-treaters consider adding reflective materials to their costumes for improved visibility during their neighborhood adventures. Carrying flashlights can also help make their journey safer and more enjoyable. Furthermore, in the Halloween spirit, we encourage everyone to enjoy themselves. This is signed by the Town Council, Janine James, Mayor, Matthew Trolinger, Councilman, Evelyn Bryant Ward, Councilwoman, and myself, David Jenkins, Councilman.
This should be a fun one for you, if your little one, your grandchild, is going to go trick-or-treating?
Yeah, well, they'll be in Baltimore, but we'll, in Canton, and a lot of young families up there, so she'll enjoy that. Thank you.
You gotta watch out for those Trolinger kids, too. They'll be out and about. So, thank you very much. Brings us to our third proclamation, which is Municipal Government Works Month.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Municipal Government Works Month, November 2023. Whereas the Town of La Plata was incorporated in 1888. And whereas Maryland is home to 157 municipalities. And whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials. And whereas, in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the Town of La Plata is proud to promote the municipal government awareness. And whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents by maintaining natural and historic sites and structures and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, play, and explore. Now, therefore, that we, the Council of the Town of La Plata, do hereby join the Maryland Municipal League in proclaiming November as Municipal Government Works Month in the Town of La Plata, La Plata, Maryland, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens. This is signed by the Council of the Town of La Plata, Janine James, Mayor, Matthew D. Trolinger, Councilman, Evelyn Bryant Ward, Councilwoman, and David Jenkins, Councilman.
Thank you very much. And then our last proclamation for this evening is Operation Green Light. It is November 6th to the 12th of 2023. Whereas the residents of the Town of La Plata have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces and maintain the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas the Town of La Plata seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, the American Red Cross, religious groups, civil service, and countless other volunteer organizations. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high stress of, high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active-duty military service members transitioning from military service are at a higher risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the Town of La Plata appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now, therefore, we, the Council of the Town of La Plata, do hereby encourage all citizens in the Town of La Plata to join the efforts of Operation Green Light for the period of November 6th through the 12th of 2023 by changing one light bulb in their home or business to a green bulb as a sign of support as military personnel transition back to civilian life upon completion of their service to our country. And this is signed by the entire Council, myself, Councilwoman Trolinger, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, and Councilman Jenkins. And this is such a, when you have two military members sitting here and one that is a huge supporter as well, and we continue, I'm the mom and the wife of the military members. It's very near and dear to our hearts that we recognize this. And I have to say, Director Stahl did an amazing job last year lighting up Town Hall green. So hopefully, it will be able to be green again in support of Operation Green Light. With that said, now we will go on to our monthly reports. Chief, you're up. All right. It's very light touch.
There we have it. Any questions I can answer for the Department's monthly report?
Go ahead.
Well, I just have, again, a comment, Chief. Thanks again for the stats. And again, I just have to praise your department again for all the ongoing training, as well as the public engagement. Again, that's something that's very important, as you know, so thank you for that. And then, just as a commentary, I would, I enjoy your video on the La Plata YouTube channel. Very well done, very well done. Thank you.
Well, I wasn't the producer of that, so.
Yeah, but you were very, you seemed very relaxed, and it was a good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have one comment. I saw all of the equipment and that was recovered up at the pawn shop. How the heck did they get that speaker out, is what?
Not be noticed? Yeah, that was, that was a pretty good job. And I'm sure they just distracted employees, but.
Yes. Well, thank you for your hard work and for your detectives, too. That was a really great result, end result for that.
Paper chase, they did a real nice job with them.
Thank you. All right. Next up, make sure I'm not skipping anyone this time, is Director Harrington with her report. And are there any questions for Director Harrington? Go ahead.
Thank you, Director Harrington. Thanks for the report again. I have, I guess, a question that's probably down in the weeds, but I'll ask it anyway, and we, maybe we could talk later on. I noticed that there's a lot more approvals at part of Pine Grove that are adjacent to or have access to Roserick Road, which is a county road. And therefore, they have to meet those requirements for entrances and those kinds of things. Are there gonna be, do you know at this time, are there gonna be any other improvements with respect to pedestrian sidewalk, pedestrian activities or crosswalks? Because there's development on both sides of Roserick Road?
They are gonna be putting a full traffic circle, or traffic light at Roserick Road and La Plata Parkway. There will be sidewalks on the commercial side, which is the north side, and then there's the existing trail along the south side.
And thank you. And I know it's part of the south, the current trail that's been ripped up, I guess they're doing, they're doing some kind of construction and water and shit on it. I assume they're gonna reinstall that.
Yes.
And then, I notice on your report, you are, and I appreciate this effort to revise Chapter 171, that's a complete street. So I'm, I'm looking forward to see what that looks like. And because that's, as you know, a very important issue with respect to fatalities. And I just posted on my website today, I have some statistics from the State Highway Administration about Charles County Dashboard and accidents and fatalities. So I look forward to that discussion. Thank you.
Question, will Polly the Pollinator be out and about anytime soon?
I don't, I don't think she has any planned appearances, but you never know.
All right, we will be following her on Facebook. So thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Director Stahl. All right. Any questions? Good evening. Any questions for Director Stahl this evening? Don't know. Quickly, quickly, sit, quickly, sit down. All right, what a very thorough report. Thank you very much for that. And our treasurer, come on up, Ms. Larson. Any questions for our treasurer? There you go. Hi.
Sorry. Thank you again for the report, I appreciate it. So I see your numbers are all the way through August. So we're still waiting for September numbers?
Yes, the reason why I am a month behind is because of how we get invoices in, entering those expenses, getting the accounts reconciled to ensure that I give you the most accurate information.
Thank you. And then, at one point, I thought you were gonna be switching to a different way, to a new software package or something to make it easier to do all this. Is that been done or completed or on the way?
We're doing a migration for.
That's what I meant.
Tyler nCode from in-house server to the cloud. But we're still gonna have the same program with the same reportings.
So is that completed yet?
It will be done Friday.
Terrific, very good. And then, again, I appreciate the charts and particularly the ones that talk about comparing the past budget with the current budget, budget and expenses and costs and revenues. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So just one question. I want to understand what you mean by how you receive payments. Is it by post date?
Well, we post the expense based on the invoice date. But it could be by the time the invoice goes to us, we send it to the department. The department reviews it, they approve it, they confirm it, they get back to us. We enter it in, I review the AP report, and then it gets posted based on the date. So something that may, an expense in September might not have been captured yet. So I push back this month so that I can try to get as much of those invoices, those expenses in as I can. It's just making sure we get the information. It's got, for me to provide this information, it has to be in the system.
Because I'm not understanding.
So.
So, because most things happen by post date.
Yeah.
So if you receive it, if it's an invoice that comes in, and maybe the invoice was from August, but it comes in in September, then it would be documented in September?
No. We post, we post it based on the invoice date. So the invoice may have, have a date of August on it, but we may not have it fully processed and posted in our system for me to pull the information to provide it in this report for you until September. That's why I pushed it back to ensure that we're getting all the data in, as much as. I mean, I could do it, but that doesn't mean we've got a full picture. That means there could be something, like Bobby has his projects with his, the Southwest quadrant. Those have to go through a whole process. And it may be a month or two by the time it gets to us and we enter it in the system. And if I give you that report prior to getting, then you don't have the full picture of that activity in that month.
Delay you from completing your work by months? Because sometimes invoices from June may not surface until August.
Yeah. And that's why I pushed back the month. I mean, we still do our bank recs and do our reconciliations. But as far as the reporting of the expense, the activity within that period, we may not have captured it to report it to you, even though it's in that period of time.
And we're on accrual?
Yes. So we don't.
But that doesn't sound like accrual, that sounds like actual.
No, it's accrual. So we're reporting the activity in the time it occurs. So if the expense occurred, say, in July, we're gonna post that expense in July, but I just might not get that information until August or September. And that's why we have it where I report a month behind.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right, that'll bring us to Director Phipps. Does anybody have any question for Director Phipps this evening? I just have one comment, I guess. It's getting very exciting about Will's Park and the amphitheater. November 1st is when everything's supposed to be in?
That's when we'll have the RFQs in. Yes, ma'am.
And not that I'm going to hold you to anything, but when do you think we'll see some, something happening?
Tom Himmler, our ARPA consultant, forecast about an eight-month period before, well, okay. So let me back up a second. Once we've gone through the request for qualifications and screened the vendors and selected a vendor, and that will be brought back to council, so you'll know who that is. And we've identified this person, this organization that's gonna do this design for us and program management over the construction. Tom Himmler predicts about an eight-month period, a year to, at the latest.
Okay, and how about for the Pocket Park? When can we see something on that?
We should be seeing something. We, we shouldn't be seeing anything until we have the final signed lease agreement back from the Will's Group, which it hasn't come back yet. But we are projecting that the first hardscaping will be going in the week of the 13th of November.
Fantastic, thank you. Any questions?
I would just echo your comments, Mayor, about, it's really exciting to see that renovation in Will's Park, and particularly, hopefully, some kind of connection eventually to the county park that's gonna be next door. So thank you for that effort.
Thank you very much. And that'll bring us to Director Kennedy for Human Resources. Any questions for HR? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Larson, I appreciate that. The one slide where you have a return on investment, thank you. That's a great bit of information. I, that's really useful. And I appreciate the fact that it relates back to our strategic plan, which talks about strategic investments and those kinds of activities. So thanks for that information. And it's working pretty good, because I've been using it all. I finally, I had a problem getting it to work on my cell phone, but it works now, because it was operator error, but I got that fixed.
And I got the message for the operator error.
Yeah, yeah. I know you did. So I fixed that and then the desktop. So it's a very, frankly, user-friendly system. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. And I hope those numbers will continue to show improvement. I do anticipate the onboarding number to look pretty healthy next, next month, because we are, have two new hires. And so they will, they're my two guinea pigs going through the onboarding and hiring fully through the system. So hopefully, we'll see some good numbers from that, too.
And they start on Monday?
So the, the grant and procurement coordinator will start on Monday. And then our accountant will start November 13th.
Well, it sounds like downstairs gonna be pretty full, huh? That's great. You guys need some extra hands there, especially dealing with the ARPA funding and all. So fantastic, great teamwork. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right, that'll bring us to our Matters of Council discussion, which is the Water System Modeling and Annual Maintenance. Director Stahl? Good evening.
Thank you, Mary Council. The water modeling that we are trying to accomplish here is for the entire town. And basically, what we are proposing for Macron to do is to use a, use a software called WaterCAD. And it will literally model our entire system using our GIS. And as we then propose new developments throughout the, throughout the town, it will then show the effect of the water use on our whole model. So then, this is something, you know, when we were growing by less than 100 units per year and with the amount of over-capacity that we had, I never really worried about it a whole lot. But when you added a major development like Pine Grove, when we're suddenly building as much as we are down in the southwest quadrant, it can have some major effects on the system. And we really need to look at that through a model. And that way, when we bring new developments in, we can then put them into the model and keep everything updated every year. So as you see in their proposal, it is based on the Kent County contract. They have an indefinite delivery contract. So we are piggybacking on the Kent County rates. And we would then, we're proposing, and this isn't an actual, it's a proposed yearly upgrade of approximately $21,000 annually to upgrade the model as we continue to add on that. So the initial cost was the $79,000. And then we would add to that $21,000 each year. Now, for this, because we are using ARPA funds, we have $150,000 in ARPA funds that was set aside for the creation of the water model. We're adding two years of maintenance onto that contract to try and spend more of that money towards that so that we're, we're bringing that into the ARPA funding as well. So you're, it's the initial contract to create the model, and then two years of maintenance on the model, which we will then spend out of ARPA funding. So my recommendation is, is that we would contract with Macron to create this model. We will let, we will give access to other engineering firms who are coming into the town so that they can then utilize our model to then create this. We actually had Pine Grove create their own model. But then what we will do now is create our model that includes all of Pine Grove so that we can see what's going on in this situation. So I would ask for your approval on this contract to Macron. I do believe that it's very worthwhile for us to have this model in the long run for the Town of La Plata.
Thank you. I have two questions before I open it up. Mr. Manuel, have you reviewed this memo? And do you agree with the recommendations? And then Ms. Larson, is this something that, I know it's with ARPA, but is this something that the town can support? So, Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Okay, that was a nice shortened quick there. And.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so I will open the floor up for any council questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Stahl, how do we currently track the water? How are we doing this right now?
Well, we, we track the water use based on EDUs. How many, we estimate that everything, we know exactly what we use as a whole, and we can go back to each one of our meters and see what individually. But because the state model requires 250 gallons per day per EDU, we use that to track how much water we use. The water model is actually very different than that. It's where you're putting water in, what your pressures are in the system, and ensuring that throughout the entire system, you have adequate flow and that you maintain adequate pressure throughout the system and that you're not getting a lower-pressure area in certain areas because you have more water use over there and the water lines haven't been sized large enough. With regard, I think your question is more about the water capacity and the appropriation. In appropriation, we track based on EDUs, equivalent dwelling units, and it's 250 gallons per day per EDU is what we use.
Well, my question was, the function that this modeling system will do, how do we currently do it today?
As we've brought some of the larger developments in, we've asked them to model for that individual development. As we've brought some of the larger developments in, we've asked them to model for that individual development. We asked Pine Grove, for instance, to create a water model for Pine Grove, which showed where all the water was coming in. As I said before, we, you know, we have 2.1 million gallons of water in the air right now above ground. And so we've had a very kind of over-capacity in our system. As we're growing very rapidly like this, we suddenly now really need a water model. We did not have one before. And so it was all based on basically solid engineering of saying, well, we're going to have so many units off of this trunk line, and we'll need, you know, a 10-inch main with this. Your standard mains on residential streets are all 8-inch. We know what the flow is through there. And the assumption was always that you were going to get a certain amount of flow through this. As you start building out like we are in Pine Grove where you have these larger water users, it's important to see how everything is affecting everything so that we don't have any challenges with our system. La Plata's system, as we've been building, was always very, very good. We've always been within a pressure swing of 3 PSI. We've never, we do not allow the system to fluctuate more than 3 PSI, which equates to about six feet in the water towers. And so pressure has always been very, very steady in La Plata because we have so much water up in the towers, for instance, that we really haven't had any shortage of water or lack of pressure. But when we start using more and more water throughout town, the water model will help us to see where we may need another water tower, for instance. You know, we were so over-capacity in previous times that I actually had to put mixers in the water towers because the water towers never fluctuated. Everything just held steady throughout the town, and that's been good. But I'd give you the example, in the older section of town where we had some 6-inch mains, which were very common back in the 50s. But as we became more modern, as we had more fire hydrants, every, all the current standard for residential streets are 8-inch mains. And so what we've always worried about is how something like Pine Grove might affect those areas where we have 6-inch mains, and we may have to come in and upgrade some of those mains in the future.
So my last question is, if we asked the developers to create these models, did that not work for us? Can we, we can't continue to ask the developers to create the models?
What we've done is we've created the water model, and McCrone, part of the reason why it cost less was because all of the model for Pine Grove was created by the developer. And we're going to use that information to create the model for the rest of town. The developer for Quailwood, for instance, is long gone. The developer for Clark's Run has been long gone. We're bringing all of those developments into our model so that we don't have something that may affect Clark's Run, for instance, and, you know, what we can do on that model.
Okay, thank you. I'm clear.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, Director Stahl. So how long will it take to implement the actual model, and when could it be up and running?
We're hoping that throughout, by the end of 2024, that we would have them up and running. We're going to get it going as soon as possible. We have McCrone working on a lot of projects for us. And so I'm very hopeful that, you know, our goal is to have this by spring of '24, and then we can kind of work out some of the, you know, we'll have to test it and try some of the technical, work out the technical difficulties throughout '24, but it would be fully implemented by the end of '24.
So I was a little, like you put off by the $79,000 cost. And then I did read further about the hours and all that. So that, is that a reasonable, probably a dumb question, but I'll ask it anyway. Is that a reasonable cost for that kind of a model, 79,000? It just seems awful high to me, but I don't know.
You're not only recovering the time, but also the cost of the software. I mean, software is very, very expensive. And a water modeling software, which they call, is, it's an AutoCAD program that they use. There's some other ones, KY Pipe, for instance, is another software that they could use. But McCrone actually uses WaterCAD.
Okay.
And when I was talking to other engineering firms, the one that did Pine Grove, I'm trying to remember the name. It wasn't Soltes. It, Jim.
Oh, my goodness. Well, I guess the other question I have then is, so this could do a what-if analysis?
Correct.
And then this could also validate a developer's model or their numbers? For instance, if a new development comes in the town-
That's right.
-and they provide you with the data, whatever, this model will help us validate that information?
Model and ensure that it's not going to affect the other residents of the town of La Plata in a negative way.
Well, and then it will, I guess, validate the proper sizing of pipes, whatever else. Okay, and then can it be-
And whether we would need another tower for this.
Okay.
You know, towers being pressure, elevation is pressure. And so, you know, there may come a time where, for instance, as we go down to like the Baldist Farm, for instance, you know, you could potentially need a tower down there. Although with the fact that the elevation drops down so much in that quadrant, we haven't really seen the need for that just because you're dropping down so much that pressure gets higher.
And then this could also be, because this also be used to identify any maintenance concerns in the future? Or not? Or is that a different-
Generally not. That would be a different kind of software. This, this is for water modeling, for pressure-
Okay, and capacity.
Capacity.
And then I just add a comment that I appreciate the words that you use in your memorandum in proactive. Thank you for that.
I think that's, you know, we've kind of gone from an old methodology of just looking at it from an engineering perspective to actually being able to model it utilizing a geographic information system.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say I've had a lot of experience in this area. And, you know, one of the things, you're talking about scenario building. So Bobby throws some certain projects online, and you show that your system's deficient. Well, it also provides you with the ability to model what would happen if we changed this pipe, what the impact would be. And so you better can utilize the use of public funds to address the needs based on these computer models so that you're replacing the right pipes in the right locations. So, yeah, it's a direct benefit. I worked on something for a smaller community 15 years ago on a water model. And, you know, one of the things we had to do was ensure that, different state, obviously, but our, you know, we required them to give it in, you know, give us the data in the program that our consultant used so that it aligned. Because certain consultants used a certain software, so we had to have it in a product that was suitable for us to be able to use. So it's, yeah, I mean, this is something that was probably long overdue. But as Bobby said, we didn't have a real demand for it up until recent.
And I would say, you know, just so that everyone's aware, we're going to use WaterCAD. So we will require our, any of our developers, whoever they hire, would have to use WaterCAD so that we could then compare it and integrate it into our model.
Yes. Appreciate it, Madam Mayor's question as to our being able to support it currently with ARPA funding on the initial cost. And then I was just curious, how will it be funded in the future? We said we can. It's no problem, 21,000. But what are we looking at as far as, where does it come from?
Operating costs. We would build that into our water budget every year. And it would just be an operating cost that we would have as part of our water costs. So, and we'd have to look at it as to whether, you know, upgrading the computer model, to me, would be an operating cost. I mean, Karina may differ from that as to maintenance. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, and this sounds like it has cross-department use as well. So, for example, Director Harrington could use the information that you're getting together and so forth?
Certainly. It's not, it's not something that she would generally get. It's more of an engineering, to ensure that the engineering side of things is correct. But certainly, it's available for anyone's use in that situation.
Thanks.
So I will entertain a, I'm looking for a consensus to move this forward to legislation as presented. Councilman Challenger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I am, yes, as well. So we will see this in just a bit. All right, now we are at the town pension with, if I could have Tom come on up too, and the, and sit, relax. I think you may be here a while. I have had a request to have Captain Norris to come on, sit down here as well. All right, so who would like to start?
I guess I'll start. So after discussions on the options with the pension and your requests, or what you guys would like to see within that pension, I went back to Bolton with the request and two kind of plans outlined and requested another outline plan. And then Bolton has come back with information regarding those plans, which is what we're trying to get from you guys are, is this what you're looking for? Should we move forward with how this proposal is?
Thank you. Yes, and Tom Vicini, an actuary with Bolton Partners.
I know.
For a very long time. Or anyone exits this room that we are crystal clear on how to move forward. So Ms. Larson, you had indicated, put this all together, and is this what we want moving forward? So I'm going to open up the floor for council because I'm sure they're going to have questions, and we can start there. Councilwoman Bryant Moore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bolton, I would like for you to explain the dynamics of the different proposals that we have in front of us. I think I understand it. I'm not sure if we all understand it. So I think we need to understand what it is that we're being asked to approve or move forward with so that we're all on the same page.
Okay, so there were three different plans or three different potential plan designs.
You're speaking to the most-
Oh, sure. There were three different potential plan designs that we were asked to look into. Two that were, that Ms. Larson had provided to us from the meeting here. The one she said, you know, if there's any other versions that seem like they're reasonable, cost that out. One of the key points of the designs that were provided to us were the idea that all the members who would be part of this plan are already part of the Maryland State Pension System. And one of the key criteria was that they would remain in the Maryland State Pension System. And so this program, to be sponsored by the town, would fit around or on top of the existing state pension plan. So it'd be sort of a supplement to it, and so there'd be an overlay. So that's what we did. The first of the three designs that we talked about is one that would really mirror what the state pension plan provides. And the state pension plan are various flavors. We're in the municipal plan, which provides for a benefit for general employees. It's not specialized to law enforcement or public safety or any other correction officers. So the, the extra criteria that would provide an extra benefit to be provided by the town in this plan number one, option number one, would be to allow for a member of the supplemental plan sponsored by the town to receive their pension earlier than they otherwise would have under the state plan. So in this case, the way the operations would work, if, and the criteria was that you'd have to have 25 years of service with the town to qualify for the supplemental benefit. The state plan may require a person to work longer before they can start their pension. So in this case, you'd have someone who potentially came to the town, worked for 25 years, could retire under the supplemental plan. They'd receive the entire benefit, the same formula as what you have under the state plan, which for most of the folks is the reform plan, which is the 1.5% of pay times service. They would have that benefit calculated based on their service and their pay at that time. The town would pay that through their pension plan. At some point in the future, they would begin their state pension, which would then come in, and the town plan would be reduced by the difference between what this town plan promised and what the state plan is delivering. So that's the key features of the first option. The big differences between the two programs, what's being provided is essentially an earlier commencement of benefits. The other aspect in the plan that's more than just the earlier commencement is that the state plan provides a post-retirement cost of living adjustment on an automatic basis with some criteria. And what we understood was that if you started with the town, you would get the post-retirement cost of living adjustments on the same basis. So if someone, say, retired five years from the town and then started their, you know, say they retired at age 55 from the town, five years later, they started their state pension. State pension would come up. The difference would still be the cost of living adjusted town plan minus what's coming from the state. So that's what we looked at. That's what we wanted to confirm. And the criteria we understood it was that you needed to have 25 years of service with the town to get this supplemental benefit. So someone who came in for 15 years, for example, would not get the town benefit at all. It would only be if they stayed for 25 years. So that's what we're, so what we've done is we've come up with these, make sure we have the plans right, then we'll go look at costings. We haven't done the costing yet. So that was Plan One. Does that make sense? Sorry. Okay, so it is a 10-year vesting. Oh, yes, you're right. I wrote it down. Sorry. Let me restate that. Thank you. So town plan, I misspoke. The town plan, if you were here for 10 years, you would have a right to this benefits. You potentially, again, could have this earlier start after 10 years.
And there was, there was a request that it goes up to 2% because I think up to 2%.
That's the second plan.
Just at the-
Okay. So are there any questions on the first plan?
Is that called just Plan One?
That was Plan One, what I just described.
But on your presentation, this is Plan One Mirror Plan. Is that what you were referring to?
Correct, because we said mirror because it's really the same benefit levels as the state plan, the same multiplier factor times average service, times service, times average.
But it just piggybacks on the state.
Correct.
And then who, I guess the overall question would be on all the plans, who administers those plans? The state or us or both?
So in the supplemental plan, the state would not have anything to do with it. So you would be responsible, the town would be responsible for administering the benefit, creating a trust to put any funds that you fund to pay these benefits in the future into managing those monies and so forth.
And so that is for Plan One, where the town will administer that.
All the plans would require administration by the town.
And so would you have to have someone that is dedicated just to that?
We would be contracted out. We do not have the experience or the time to manage this.
Contracted out. So, okay.
For any of the three plans.
Yeah, for all three plans, they would be contracted out. So essentially, and I don't know how many hours it would take a week to-
There's a lot of reporting requirements, and we are not familiar with those. We would have to have somebody specialized in managing these type of plans.
So would that be the equivalent of a part-time or full-time person?
I would probably guess initially it would be part-time, but because we do have a significant portion of our staff that is potentially at retirement age, that may qualify for these plans, that number may- That may qualify for these plans, that number may, the time invested would have probably go up to match the number of people that they're managing.
Do we have a CPA? That works with us?
I mean, we have our auditors, but we would go with somebody that's actually. Is familiar with these types of plans.
And and the reporting is not. It's not every week, it's not.
No, no, but um, just like Maryland.
Yeah.
We have to report on our financials. They provide us all those numbers. Will they provide us what are liabilities that we have to record? And they also make sure we comply. I'm not familiar in that area, so we would definitely need somebody.
I understand that piece, but I'm saying the time requirement is not like we're gonna need them every month, every, you know.
No.
Right.
But they, I mean, they could be processing the payments out to each of those employees that qualify each month. Depending on what other requirements we have. It could be something that has to be done monthly because we would have to pay out it monthly.
I got you.
If I may, just typically those things you would use a a bank or other entity like a PNC or whoever, they have departments that do that. They would custody the assets in the trust. They would take care of the monthly payments. They would take care of the 1099 reporting that goes to the participants after they retire.
Yeah, I've done that.
But they, they take care of that.
So this is probably a question for later, but. We say it being a a trust, so that that's funded by the town, but is that? Is that based upon funds generated by us through a stock market? Or I mean, I I guess I'm confusing it with something else.
That again would be something that I would not get involved in as far as where, how they're investing the funds that we could.
But it could be funded that way. I'm just saying in overall.
The town has to fund it. They would have to fund whatever plan that they promised with the employee, the town would have to fund.
And and I guess we can talk later about the sources of that fund.
Yeah, that that would be after we get.
Right, got it.
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
But that would be typically what you would do. You would form a legal trust. The money would be put in contributions typically from the town and from the employees in most of these cases. Invested, there's a committee you would form who would have fiduciary responsibility over it.
Right. The first one?
Okay.
Alright.
So the second plan was an improved plan. So this raised the multiplier from 1.5% for most folks to 2%. Which is more, you know, when we'd look at. Public safety plans around the state, that's more where they are, 2% to 2 and 1/4% of pay as a multiplier. It would rely retire, allow full retirement at age 50. With 25 years of service. It would. Provide 10 year, again, 10 years of vesting and again would fit around. The Maryland State Plan. So in this case, you would. Always have. An excess piece paid by the plan because you're paying this higher multiplier level, this 2% versus what the state's paying, which is 1 and 1/2%. So even if the person retired the same day they could have retired from the state. You would have an extra, you would have an obligation because you're paying the higher multiplier on their, on their pay and their service.
So so why does the example start at age 52 if they can retire at 50?
Uh, because that person would have, wouldn't have 25 years of service till they're 52, that's why. So we tried to take some, some actual people from your data. And. That's why, just just the person's age over their service level, I guess. So those are the first two. And then the third one was to. Look at what maybe was something else we've seen in the, in the community, in the state as a, as a sample. Here we said either age 60 or 25 years of service, whichever is earlier. We did use the higher multiplier, the 2 and 1/4% multiplier, which we see in other public safety plans. Uh, with a cap though, a cap of 30 years of service to be counted in the plan. The one big thing in this plan number three, which we, is what we typically see in the non-state plans, while the state plan has a built-in. Post-retirement cost of living adjustment. A lot of the other municipal plans do not. Because they don't want to have that sort of baked in uh responsibility for inflation in the future. And so what a lot of them do is they'll say, we're not going to provide. An automatic cost of living adjustment, but we'll look at it and if finances permit, we'll on an ad hoc basis award. Uh, a cost of living adjustment and post-retirement. So that's the, one of the big differences between Plan Three and the other two. The other two, because they're modeled on the state plan, which has cost of living adjustments built into the design. Would have cost of living inflation built into it. This one would not, but this one has a higher initial multiplier. Which means that in theory, there'd be a, a, the need for a cost of living adjustment would be a little bit further out because they're starting with a little higher benefit. Than than in the other two plans. So that's the, the, the pro and the con or the given the take in that third one.
And Tom, this one says that early retirement is allowed at age 50 or 10 years of service if earlier.
Right.
So they can serve. The 10 years. I mean, arguably their second career, 10 years here and get uh the retirement, right?
Right, but there's a reduction for that. And so it'd be, if they were 30 years old or 35 years old, trying to take early retirement, the reduction would be so large that would essentially wipe out the benefit. So really, it's. That 10 years is designed for the uh, the officer who comes for perhaps from another town at, you know, after. Most of her career or a full career elsewhere and they're 45 years old or 50 years old. And they're going to work 10 years and then they're going to want to retire out of this plan. So that's how, that's where the 10 years comes from, really.
And this applies to all town employees?
So we haven't priced out yet. Our initial charge was to look at the police and the public works folks. So goes to subgroups. So we have, we haven't done any of the pricing yet, so we can certainly include others. And our, our plan was when we made sure that these were the right. Designs we wanted to price, that we would provide you with the cost information that would subdivide the cost between. The police, the public works and everybody else. So you could see.
Okay.
You know, each, each, each one's component as it goes.
Okay.
The other, the other thing I do not have in these designs, because it's really a financing question, is. It, will there be any employee contributions over and above what's already contributed to the, to the state plan? So I think the state is what, 7% I think of pay? If you look around the state, a lot of these standalone plans have contribution rates more like 8 or 9%. There's some as low as seven, but most of them are a little bit higher. But that would be a, once you know the costs, decide how to, how to divvy it up.
So Tom, when you um present this, if this is what we say we want to move forward with this. You're going to show um public works and police, this is their benefit as you've outlined here. And a benefit for those other employees? Or is it just going to be strictly this and uh the um retire, there's no retirement for the other employees?
So our original charge was to, this is something that would be only provided as a supplement for the police and the public works. However, we have the census information, I believe, for everybody uh to confirm. I made sure that police and public works, I'm not sure. That was not the original charge. It's not a big deal to us to include extra people if you wanted that, but we had not at this point uh been understanding we would include other folks.
Well. From my point of view, it's gotta be fair and equitable. And we have um discussed about the challenges with the police and the public works. So. Giving them a bump up is not against, you know, I, I mean, it's something we're exploring, but uh. To see what the retirement for everyone, uh, because you can't exclude, you know, 40 people saying or 30 people saying that. You you're not getting a retirement. To me, it would be. The bump up, the enhanced retirement, but a retirement. For everyone.
We currently have that with the Maryland State Retirement.
Okay. We can put that, those. Numbers down, this is, so it's very clear, this is what. Non-police and public works will be receiving as a retirement through the Maryland State Pension. And this is um what the enhancement would be.
We, we can provide you the Maryland State numbers.
Good, good, good. That way it's just easy to see that on there. Um, other questions?
Does this affect the uh, at least? The uh, that, what's it called, the 435 or wherever it is?
457.
Does that have any effect or non-effect or what? How does this play into this?
So we, we put in the information on the 457 as um a completely alternative plan to this. That we could manage at the town level without having to do anything with Bolton. Um, right now, all employees have access to 457. It's, it's an supplementary retirement plan that government employees are eligible for. They can contribute. As much as they want up to, you know, the IRS annual limit. And. That gives them. Extreme control, like for like Maryland, you just put in your money and it's, it's there and it's got a set interest and you can't do anything. But the 457 plan. Um, somebody can go in and choose where to invest their money. They can be very aggressive with it. And even if we only contributed. You know, a thousand dollars a year, they could double, triple or, you know, potentially more depending on how much risk they want to take. And then, you know, they could, and alter that at any time in their career. So as they get closer to retirement, maybe we get a little bit more conservative. But there's a significant more potential of growth and earnings that they have much more control over. Um, than with a system like Maryland where it's just the set rate and that, that number will never, you know what that number is always. Whereas with the 457, um, it supplements on top of anything that's Maryland does.
Okay.
But yeah, but then the employees have that extra investment that they can take with them. They can do whatever they want with once they retire, like that's their money. And uh, and like I said, they could really um inflate what the retirement savings are pretty significantly.
And it's pre-tax dollars, correct?
Correct. And. Yeah, I mean, the Roth option is not, but um, but generally the, the standard 457 is, is tax free.
And currently, we have what, 40?
About, yeah, about half the employees are already um are using it in some form or fashion.
But we don't match.
We do not.
But that would be option number four.
It could be a fourth option, correct.
That would be our force. So what we were looking at was multiple plans, these three plans, and then a fourth one to be a contribution benefit. And let you guys evaluate and analyze and see how we move forward.
And isn't that what the government, the federal government currently does?
They have um a pension. They also um do a matching contribution of 5%.
A 5%, okay.
Yeah, and 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 the benefit with the, with the 457 too is that I, you know, if this would be something we were interested in. Um, I've already reached out to our rep and um we could certainly plan where she sets a block of time to come in. And have appointments with the employees so that they can understand how they can manage that money and really maximize like its potential.
It's good if you have no deductions. I would. Increase it.
And so we're looking, um, we're looking. As a benefit for our employees and there's two, as we've discussed before, two very different ones. One that has to be contracted out. And um is an enhancement for a public works and for um the police. And the other one, the 457 can be in-house, can be. Controlled by um the employee. It's how it, how aggressive they want to be.
And another note. The town also has more control over the cost of this plan. So our financial, the financial impact is more controllable over a contribution benefit than a pension benefit.
Do they ever do COLA on contribution?
I mean, you say that you contribute 5% when employee salary goes up, so that.
Okay, good. So I just want to be clear. I don't, I don't want us to confuse the issues. The 457B is for everybody. That's not, that has nothing to do with what we ask Mr. Bolton to do. We ask for. Plans for the police department and for public works because of the nature of the work that they do. We didn't want them to be 100 years old out there putting down pipes and policing our streets. So the two, the three options that were given to us. Based on what the council asks for is what we should be deciding on tonight. Options one.
Yeah.
Two, improved option three.
Yeah, it would be for all three, for them to do a study of all of them.
Right.
So we don't have to pick one. We can say these sound um. Reasonable.
That we want to, these are what you want them to do the study on. It's what we're trying to find out. And then how much.
Tom, is this something that is um? I mean, doable to look at these three? Is that something that uh your company can do to do a comparison on these threes?
Yes, yes, we, this is something that we do for many other municipalities and governments in the state of Maryland. Uh, whether it's a standalone plan, except, except completely separate from Maryland State or a plan that is. As this would be a supplement to the, to the state plan.
Okay, great. Alright, any other questions?
Go ahead.
Lieutenant Norris, I mean Captain Norris, you'll have to get accustomed to it.
You can call me Officer.
Any questions, any, any concerns about what was presented?
No, I'm, I mean, I have several, but. A 457 plan does nothing to.
Right.
Shorten anything. So, yeah, that's.
We're talking about the three options for public works and police.
So. To me, this is a very unconventional way of enhancing benefits just because we're. We're, we're basically. Doing apples and oranges. And we're kind of trying to push them together. And it, it seems like it'd be more work than just doing a standalone. Plan or at least having that as an option to look into rather than three options that are overlays to our current plan.
But I think the overlay is the only way to get this.
Yeah.
You cannot.
Can't.
Do a standalone plan because you would take a hit to move those funds out. So. Getting to the end result, forget the work, because we, none of us are having to do it. Does it get to what the police department and the public works? Needs? Does it get you to the early retirement option that has been an issue for many, many years?
I think probably. Plan two and three are the closest we'll get to it with these three.
Put in there because we don't have a budget and I want you guys to have an idea of the cost of, this is. The cost of each of these plans. And if you can't afford the more. Enhanced plan, here's another plan that will also give you the option to retire early since that seems to be the real big issue is letting these employees retire early.
So now we just need to see what the cost for all three options are. So that we can make an informed decision on which way to go because all three will get us to the desired end result, early retirement. Yes.
Um, if, if I could, um Director Saul, since you're a stakeholder in a way on this same project, right? Do you have any comments?
I do. Um, I think that there, there are several things. Please don't forget, there's multiple challenges with early retirement. And our biggest challenge, and I'm not one of them, is healthcare. And I would also say to you that you have to take into account, it's one thing to say, we want to retire early. It's another thing to say you want to retire with healthcare. Because we don't offer healthcare in retirement at all. And so we have lots of people who have been eligible to retire for quite some time. But they can't retire because they can't afford health insurance on their own. So not only would I say that a benefit of, you know, matching the 457. But also the fact that if we offered the ability to them to just be able to buy into our plan. To be able to have a supplement to their plan. I'm personally lucky because my wife is going to get it through, she's a teacher and she's going to get it through the school system. But I could point out numerous people who don't have someone who has that. And so there's. The other retirement benefit that could be necessary in this situation would be some sort of supplementary plan to health insurance. That would allow people to reasonably retire. Yes, it would be nice to be able to retire at 55. 50, whatever that is. I have a son who is a Fairfax County firefighter who can retire at 39. Because he went in at 18. Um, you know, but. You know, healthcare is still a big question in this scenario. And so I throw that out there as. You know, another mechanism too, to be able to add supplementary benefits. To people to allow for that earlier retirement as well. And I don't want to kind of take that picture off. I would also say that, as you know, I have said to all of you that I felt that it was important and. I don't want to speak against. Uh. You know, offering supplementary benefits. But I think that I was always one who said, I thought that we should supplement for all. And I just. Want to. Reiterate that. That it's, you know, I think there's too many things that we don't have, like supplementary healthcare. Like um additional contributions. And I don't want to sound like I'm. Um. Not grateful for the consideration in this situation. But um, speaking for all, I think that we should always take that into account because the pension benefits. I'm one that's under the old system, so I have a higher. I'm one that's under the old system, so I have a higher percentage. And so, you know, today's retirement, it's one point five percent. They got cut three, three tenths of a percent on their, on the newer pension system. So I just, I throw that out there as something for consideration. And as I say, I'm very grateful for any consideration to add to retirement benefits. And I just think that
Okay, so as presented though, you have no, you have no comments on, as of these three, one way or the other, if it's, I mean, you said you're grateful for whatever consideration as it relates to the department, with the additional considerations that you've given us down the line.
Yes, I think that the, you know, the only things that I thought should be under consideration would be a contribution towards healthcare. And also, you know, making sure that one of the things that was, Karina's looking at the match on the four fifty-seven.
We need to ask about the health benefits.
We are, we are actually in the middle of working with our, and developing a plan now that includes the retiree benefit. So that's, yeah, that's on the plan.
You did.
Didn't see this ahead of time, so I didn't know.
Yeah, well, it's not in there, but we did talk about that. We did, just made a big decision on these.
I forgot.
Yeah, we did.
Thank you.
Okay, so looking for a consensus from the council to move this forward and have the town manager enter into an agreement with Bolton to conduct this study? Or this, yeah, this information, Councilman Trolinger, as presented?
As presented and hearing the considerations from multiple stakeholders with moving it forward.
Councilman Bryant Ward? Yes. Councilman Jenkins?
Yes, but, but I, the answer is yes, but I assume, I thought there, there this would cost more than originally intended because of the option. Is that still true? Okay, no, I mean, our fee to Bolton.
Yeah.
Okay.
But because we've changed the scope of work,
Okay.
that, the new proposal is going to have to come back. I don't know if it's going to be more or less.
All right. And then what do you estimate? I'm going to put you on the spot and ask you, how soon can you get it done?
So, two things. So, so one, the, the, the pricing of the three designs is within the fifty thousand dollar scope.
I knew you could do that, Tom.
So that's within the scope there in terms of timing. I'd like to say we'd be able to come back. So what's, it's almost the end of October. I'd like to say we'd be able to come back five to six weeks with the, with the report for you to consider, you know, review with, with the finance team, make sure they don't have any questions. And then, then when they're comfortable with the numbers, any tweaks we have to do to bring it for the, the group here for your consideration.
Great.
All right, and my vote is that we do move it forward too. So thank you all for being here. Thank you for explaining it. Thank you for your patience. It's a very important item that we have to make sure we're crystal clear on what we're asking for and to move forward. And I look forward to seeing the results for that. And thank you for driving down here, Tom. I appreciate that.
Thank you for having me.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us to our legislative portion of the agenda, which is Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-eight, the Water System Modeling and Annual Maintenance. Mr. Manuel?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Resolution Concerning Water System Modeling and Annual Maintenance for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into professional service contract for the generation and annual maintenance of a gen, system-wide hydraulic model for the town water distribution system and all matters generally relating thereto.
All right, do I have a motion to accept Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-eight as presented?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash three, three eight, Water System Modeling, Annual Maintenance, as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us down to our new business, Commission Reports. Councilman Trolinger?
Yes, Beautification. Commission met yesterday. Great meeting with our new members. Thank you to Town Council for approving. We do have one vacancy still remaining. So if you know of anybody available who's willing to participate in beautification and the aesthetics of our town, as well as I mean, anything related to keeping our town wonderful and beautiful, then let us know. We, our next meeting is in November. I'll get, I think it's Director Phipps, is it November fifteenth? Is that right? Believe, sorry to call you out from over there. Fourth, not close. Fourth Monday. One, two, three. That, y'all, that's right, that's right, because it's the twenty-seventh. That's right, very, very close to Thanksgiving. Thank you, Director Phipps. So we will see you then. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Bryant Ward? Councilman Jenkins?
Our next Procter Recreation Commission meeting, I believe, is November the thirteenth. It'll be a virtual meeting again. And Director Phillips did, did provide us some food for thought about a potential new member or alternative member, so we'll look at that. And then just so everybody knows, I'm, I'm in the process of drafting an email to the Playta Town Center Corporation to do a couple of things, see if we can meet again, and then to take direct action on what is a work plan and what, what do they want to accomplish. So I'm putting that together today and hopefully we'll get that out tomorrow to them. Thank you.
All right, and I had the opportunity to sit on the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. They have a lot of energy and some great ideas. I do have two candidates that I would like to bring forward that their commission is expiring and I am recommending to council to put their, to extend their commission for three years. It's Rich Gilpin and Stuart Bowling. So I would like a motion, well, I would like to make a motion that we do accept their, their willingness to serve on another three years on the HPC. And I would entertain a second.
Second.
Any discussion for me? All right, all in favor for extending these three years for each one, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All right, fantastic. Also, they are, they talked about a pollinator garden that would be behind the train station, more towards the railroad tracks that you would be able to walk around on the platform of the train museum. And the HPC all agreed that that was a great use of time and they are exploring that. So that will be going forward on that. Congratulations to all of the scarecrow winners. That was such a fun time going through town, seeing that. I was at a meeting today and I was stopped by someone who doesn't even live in this county and said, we come here because of the events such as the scarecrows and the, they're looking forward to the lighting of the tree. And they love the concert. So that was such a positive thing. So kudos to Colleen and her great team for doing that. This weekend, I cannot believe it, on Saturday, we have Trick or Treat Trail from twelve to three throughout town. And there are so many businesses that are participating. So get your kiddos out there dressed up in the ghost and goblins or whatever is the cool thing now. That was what it was back in the, back in the day when I was growing up. So that will be twelve to three. November fifth. Not only is it daylight savings time, so please remember that, but we have our Veterans Day Parade where we usually have at least fifteen hundred people that are marching or riding in that. And it's a fantastic way to honor our veterans. And so that will be happening. And then our next meeting will not be until November fourteenth because of the way the calendar falls this year. So we've got some time. But I want to take this moment. I don't think that our, our great staff hears it enough. And I see a lot more echoes on that I probably shouldn't see that, that the hours that you're burning on all of the issues. You make things that are going on in La Playta look like they're just going seamlessly. And I know that there's a lot of, like you're a bunch of ducks sitting on water. Those legs are moving tirelessly. So thank you very, very much for all of your hard, hard work. I know I greatly appreciate it and you are making a difference in our town. So with that said, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned at seven nineteen. Have a great night.